Well, this is a great day in Middleton and welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. And I'm going to open the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for October 15, 2019, to order. And the first item is the roll call.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Kuhn?
Here.
Buzard?
Here.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Wonderful, thank you.
And the second, next item is the comments from the citizen present and there even, somebody's going to keep track of the time. You are?
I can do it.
You will?
I can do it.
Okay.
Thanks, Lou.
So, when I call your name, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and you have three minutes. And we have a lot of people, we're going to stick to the times. So, the first one is
Hello, good evening. My name's Erin Farquhar and I am speaking on behalf of Pro For The Addy this evening, for three reasons actually. Because personal reasons, because I've been disabled since 2008, on behalf of my husband who's been, worked for four family-owned businesses in Middleton over the years. And those businesses can only stay open because we've been able to find affordable housing for him to work close by. And also because of my eighth grader, because of the location of where the Addy is going to be. That probably is the one that brings tears to my eyes most, because there's a recent story that comes to mind. We act, my eighth grader is actually twice exceptional. She's on the Asperger spectrum, so there are certain things that she has delays with and other things she's super interested about. And she really wants to do Mali United Nations. And the, so she's actually participating in the high school Mali United Nations program. And we walk with her over from Cromory over to the high school. And they're actually helping her, and she's going to be at Gopher and Page, the event that's on November 2nd at Cromory. And the only way we can do that is because we live so close to the school. So, the fact that the Addy is going to be right there across the Willie Street Co-op is going to give so many parents an opportunity to be involved with their kids and their students and stuff. But also just having the affordable housing and everything. But there's a lot of people here tonight that also have their stories to share, so thank you for your time, and I hope you consider the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next one is Nicholas Porter.
Good evening, Mayor Barrow and council members. My name is Nicholas S. Porter. I live at 4105 Park Trail, the corner of Sand Hill and Park Trail. My house is on a lower elevation of the North Lake neighborhood. I'm concerned that the water runoff from Redtail Acre will result in my basement being flooded or flooding of the electric box at the corner of my neighbor's property. During my 22 years here in this home, I have not had basement flooding from stormwater. In the early years, I believe we had two 100 year rainstorms. Last year, we had a rainstorm that was described as a once in 400 years. For me, the North Lake stormwater runoff functioned as designed. The water rose from the swale, crossed my neighbor's property, and came into my yard for about 20 feet. At the same time, the water was running down Sand Hill, turned the corner at Park Trail, and then ran down to the Orchid Parks Park entrance in Sedgmano. Bob Cole, in the meeting of the Middleton Water Resources Management Commission on September 30th, stated that he thought the stormwater runoff would stay at, on Redtail Acre property. Somewhere along the line, I thought I heard the same thing. I would like to quote a portion of the minutes of the stormwater. Staff provided a brief explanation of stormwater management principles and standards, including the 90% infiltration standard. The standard applies to average annual rainfall, which is defined to be the rainfall pattern of 1981. In order to meet the standard, a development must have, a development must infiltrate 90% of the volume of rainfall that would have infiltrated the site given the rainfall in 1983, assuming no development. At City Hall's request, Redtail voluntarily agreed to attempt to infiltrate 100% of this volume. The final model shows 99.4%. Staff also noted that recent state legislation now prohibits cities from enacting local ordinances that would require more than 90% infiltration. Perhaps this is where I learned, or got the idea, that there would be 100% retention of water on Redtail. We recently had storms when Redtail, we recently had rains when Redtail stormwater came onto the North Lake swale. Evidence of this was the bales of straw in the North Lake swale. For me, the brown water flowing down the North Lake swale was most proof that Redtail was overflowing. In the special meeting minutes, the Redtail model was 99.4% retention. The last 6% that came down was an awful lot of water. In looking at the Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement, I feel that it is pretty clear that the stormwater was going to the North Lake drainage system. One of the drains is down this way, the swale. And then there's also, at this point here, an overflow. And that goes into the North Lake swale.
Nicholas, could you please finish in about 10 seconds? There's three and a half minutes, so.
Oh, okay. So, I leave the question for you to ponder. Was the design of the North Lake stormwaters planned 22 years ago, a plan that was sufficiently worked to, that has sufficient capacity to handle, I'm messing this up, will this now have, the North Lake stormwater plan now have enough capacity to handle the additional stormwater runoff from Redtail Acre? As owner of a low-lying house, I think this answer is important to me.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
The next one is Katie Nelson.
Do you need me to go?
You can choose, may, well, if you want consistency, you can just go there. So, whatever you like.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Katie Nelson, and I'm the alder for District 3, where the Addy will be part of our district. I wanted to just put in my support for the project and just commend Anthony Gray for his tenacity and his willingness to change his project to make it better for the neighborhood. I also want to say that I'm really proud of my neighbors and constituents. For people who were not supportive of the project and for people who are supportive of the project, I think it's caused some interesting dialogue, and I really hope that we can keep it up. And please come to me with any concerns that you have. And I think that being the good neighbor city, we can live up to that and be proud of the new development. And also, I want anyone who lives at the Addy to take pride in the neighborhood. We're a, we're a proud working-class neighborhood in District 3, and this is what we're all about. So, thanks.
Thank you, Katie. So, the next one is Camille Carter.
Good evening. My name is Camille Carter, and I am the president of the Madison Black Chamber of Commerce. And we work with black business owners within Madison and also Dane County. We are in support of the project of the Addy. We have reviewed the plans, we have worked with Anthony and talked with him about his vision, and we certainly support everything that he's trying to do. We certainly understand that mixed income is very good for the neighborhood, is very good for the ecosystem, and we certain, the ecosystem of Middleton. And we are really inspired to hopefully see this project come to fruition. So, as you consider this project, consider the many families and also businesses that will be influenced as a result of this project. Anthony Gray has worked very closely with other business owners that are in real estate development. He mentors them, he just kind of brings them along and educates them. And we really do appreciate his leadership. And hopefully, the city of Middleton will also see the benefits, not only in the, the community development, but also the economic development and the overall health of the city that this project could bring. I thank you for listening to us, and certainly, we hope that you support his initiatives to grow the city of Madison.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
So, the next one is Emily Kuhn.
Hi, my name is Emily Kuhn, and I live at 2425 Middleton Beach Road. I am the alder for District 4. So, if I have any of you in the House, welcome. And it's so, it's so great to see so many faces here. I firmly believe in workforce housing. The, I totally support the Addy. It is not in my district, but I am literally just a stone's throw. And as we are moving Middleton forward, and we're working with each other in neighborhoods, there are other sites that could be developed into workforce housing. And I want, I hope that we support the Addy and the Workforce Housing Committee on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next one is James Iliff.
Good evening, and thanks for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here also to speak in favor of the Addy and to affirm, and more generally, the whole idea of affordable housing. My name is Jim Iliff. I've been a resident of Middleton for 18 years. Most recently, I've become very interested in the whole issue of housing, especially affordable housing. And so, I'm a, a member of a new group beginning in Middleton. We're calling ourselves Voices in Favor, that would seek to advocate for the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Middleton. Affordable housing is an issue we all ought to be concerned about because it affects all of us. When I moved to Middleton 18 years ago, I discovered I couldn't find any affordable housing in Middleton for myself and my family. I had to come to the, come here with what I thought was a fairly reasonable salary and a good prospects, but it was, couldn't meet the, the demands of the housing market. And that was 18 years ago, and it's only gotten worse since. I, I worry about families who have to make decisions about housing that require them to live at great distances or to choose substandard housing, when we have well within our ability the, the construction and maintenance of affordable housing. As I said before, I definitely support Anthony Gray and his project. I see that it is good for all of us in, in the community. I think the diversification of, of, of housing in the city that would allow people who work here to actually live here is, is a very good thing. As Alder Nelson said, you know, "We style ourselves as the good neighbor city." And I think that ought to mean something in all that we do, in how we treat one another, in how we move forward as a city. So, as I said, I very, am very much in support of the Addy, and will be here on a regular basis to can, speak in favor and in support of other such projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next one is Don Ricks.
Hello, my name is Don Ricks. I am the principal of Cromory Middle School. I live here in Middleton. I've been a resident of Middleton since winter of 2017. And a lot of you might be familiar with Lupe's Taqueria. Lupe is actually my father-in-law. And the entire time I was a teacher, I had to live in the small apartment space over Lupe's Taqueria and work two jobs in order to afford to be here. And the reason why I did that, I really felt like Middleton was the best place for my kid to get what he needed. My kid does have an IEP, and I believe very strongly in Middleton's belief that all kids can succeed in putting special attention on kids who have traditionally not been able to because of our systems. I'm coming to speak as a parent, but also as an educator and a community member and a person of color when I say that Middleton is not affordable for a lot of people. I have a lot of teachers who can't afford to live in Middleton, but would love to live in Middleton. I have a lot of students and families who live in the outskirts, and substandard is being very polite, just so they can have their kids in the place where they believe they have the best opportunity to be successful. And I think that says a lot. Middleton is supposed to be the good neighbor city, and I really think that we have a lot of things that make us amazing. The question is, who are we willing to be amazing for? And what are we willing to do in order to make sure everybody has access to that? Because right now, we're not there, but we can be. So, my message is short and sweet. I'm, I'm pro Addy, and I think it'll be the, the best thing to do. I think it's a moral imperative for us to move forward with this, because it makes Middleton so much closer to the reality that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. So, the next one is Rodney Jenkins.
I decline the speaker this time.
Okay. Next one is John Eisbrenner.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Eisbrenner. I live in the North Lake neighborhood. I'm here to speak about the first agenda item on the backlog, and hopefully not the second or third. I do not live on the side of the neighborhood that adjoins a Redtail Acre property. However, I do sit on the HOA board and hopefully kind of represent some of the interests of my neighborhood. What I find, what I feel I need to do is, is just provide some context. Last year, we had almost 12 inches of rain on August 20th, 2018. That was record fall, I think 1964, still holds a record. During that time, our neighborhood did suffer some damage. We did have to pay into tens of thousands of dollars to fix that, to, to make sure that stormwater runoff is managed in our neighborhood. However, none of that damage occurred next to the Redtail Acre property. This year, multiple days of three inches of rain, and this is across two months, have caused erosion, property damage. So, it, it's abundantly clear to us that the only thing that has changed is this new development. So, what we're not, what we're asking as a neighborhood is not for you to decline or dismiss the, the stormwater maintenance agreement with the Redtail Acre property. We just ask you to, to continue to table that, because what that does is it provides an incentive for the developer to work with our neighborhood to resolve that stormwater drainage issue, so that we can come to an amicable agreement, and then they can start developing. What I, as I understand, without that agreement in place, the developer cannot build lots, they cannot start constructing homes on that property. And that allows, again, some incentive for that developer to work with our neighborhood, so that we can resolve that in an amicable way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. The next one is Sarah Cordes.
My name is Sarah Cordes. I live at 6714 Franklin Avenue. I'm here to speak about the Addy apartment building. We would like to commend Mayor Barrow and alderperson Robert Burke for finding the way to and proposing this compromise of the, of the three-story building. We would also like to thank the alderpeople who voted for that compromise. We would further like to commend the developer, Anthony Gray, for changing architects, for changing the driveway of the project so that traffic would not be routed through school zones, and for bringing eight units of workforce housing to the city. Anyone who truly researches the demographics of our neighborhood, our adjacent neighborhoods, and our Soft Trail Elementary School, will learn that we in our neighborhood are fortunate to live in one of the most diverse areas of the city. And that's one of the main reasons we love and are so proud of our neighborhood. We look forward to welcoming the residents of the Addy to, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So, the next one is John Brown. John Brown. Okay, well, then we move on to the next one, Jay Smith.
Good evening. I live in North Lake 2. My address is 4019 Valley Ridge Road, Lot Number 5. I'm concerned about the stormwater runoff as well. My lot actually backs up to a wet retention pond. And I actually sent an email back in June 11th to the mayor, to my alderman, to Mark Olpitz, to Kurt Paulson about the concerns. I think I got one response back. And Sean Stowsky, I think, came to my house and actually looked at it and walked me through it. I still have not heard back from anybody else. You know, we, I continue to hear about being a good neighbor city. Well, I hope this developer and the city is a good neighbor to North Lake as well. I was never even notified there was going to be a pond in my backyard. It's pretty sad. Been there 22 years.
Thank you, Jay. If I got your email, I should have responded, or I would have, but I'm going to check. So, if I was on the email, so. Okay, so the next one is David Jeter.
Thank you, Mayor and Alders. Tonight, I'm again speaking in reference to the North Lake concerns about the Redtail Acres. But what I'd like to do is read a letter that one of my neighbors sent to me today and asked to read on his behalf, because he could not be here at the meeting. "To whom it may concern, I am not able to attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to express my support for the North Lake Homeowners Association's concerns in regards to the Redtail Acres development. I have lived in North Lake for four years and haven't seen anything like the amount of standing water and erosion that has been occurring since the Redtail Acres development was initiated. In addition, our property located at 4125 Redtail Pass, which is North Lake Lot Number 45, directly adjacent to the development, has experienced an increased amount of flooding, including our basement, due to the development. The development has removed a large farm field that served to help prevent water from draining into our property." And for those who may not know, the amount of property we're talking about is 6.3 acres, which again was alfalfa and cornfields right up until the development commenced. "The water now flows freely across roads and small amounts of green grass eroding the soil and berm that was designed to help protect our property and neighborhood from high amounts of rain. The berm behind our property needs to be repaired and extended, so that it prevents water from flowing across our property and the property of our neighbors." For anybody's reference who might be interested, by the way, on October 1st, we had heavy rainfall, and I took it upon myself to take photos and videos showing water flow down Redtail Pass, and also on the property of the development, showing how the stormwater management is inadequate to handle moderate amounts of rain. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next one is Andy Orlandson.
Is this in the public comment?
Yes.
I've registered to speak on Agenda Items 1 through 3 of old business. Would you like to?
Yeah, you can speak. Yeah, yeah, this is the time to speak, whatever you want.
I represent the developer of the subdivision Redtail Acres. This is a subdivision plant that has been considered. It's been approved by every committee. It's been approved by this council. It's been recorded. The stormwater management plan has received approval from the DNR, Dane County, City of Middleton staff. It exceeds the maximum standard. The only thing, it's been built, it's been inspected. The stormwater management agreement will impose upon the developer a duty to maintain those improvements. To the extent that there is any erosion, or the performance of those stormwater retention facilities is compromised, the developer will have a duty to repair them. At this point, the only thing left for this council to do is to approve and sign the Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement. We are ready, willing, and able to do that. It is a form downloaded from the city's website. We, we have seen the recommendations in the Public Works Department's October 11th, 2019 memo to the Common Council, Mr. Huth's memo, memo. It's part of your board packet. There are a series of four recommendations at page two of Mr. Huth's memo. The developer is more than happy to comply with those recommendations, and they can be made a part of the stormwater management agreement. There is additional suggestions at page three of Mr. Huth's memo, which are advisory in nature and concern how the Redtail Acres subdivision developer and the North Lake Homeowners Association can come together and work out something mutually to deal with the riprap area where there is discharge from the, the stormwater retention ponds into the North Lake drainage basin. And the developer's happy to do that, too. But I think it's unwise, and at this point, I think it's improper for the Homeowners Association to ask this council to hold up what is essentially a legal duty, which is to sign the agreement that's on your form for improvements and a development that is already approved, platted, recorded, and This is a private matter between this Redtail Acres subdivision and its eventual Homeowners Association and the North Lake Homeowners Association. And it will get worked out. Those discussions are ongoing. But to use this approval process as some kind of ploy to create leverage is asking this body to intervene in a, in a matter that it, it really, at this point, has no business intervening in. Now, we are happy to have Mr. Huth and his staff consult, mediate, you know, assist the parties in coming up with solutions that are workable and make sense. And, and we'll take those recommendations very much to heart in working something out. But these are good neighbors, and they're going to have to be neighbors. But this is a neighbor's issue at this point. This is not a legislative matter. This is signing the agreement that you require the developer to sign, and the developer is ready, willing, and able to sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
I, I would note as well that Ryan Quam, who is the engineer that designed the system and can speak to the technical stormwater stuff, is available for questions, should any of you have any. Thank you.
So, Ryan, that's the next speaker. Go ahead and speak.
Thank you again. My name is Ryan Quam with Quam Engineering. And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. And also, just to get, get a little bit more background on the, kind of, the engineer's perspective. First of all, as Andy said, this project did meet all city and state requirements. It was reviewed by city staff, by Dane County staff, by the DNR staff. And after addressing all their comments, we did receive approvals for the stormwater design. As Andy mentioned, we actually exceeded the requirements as asked for by cities committees. And so, we have provided 99% infiltration, whereas only 90% is required. The biggest item that we have met, which kind of pertains to some of the discussion today, is, is we're required to reduce flow rates that, that enter the site, that exit Redtail Site and enter the North Lake ditch. That's a standard requirement. And the flow rates have, have actually been reduced. If you look back at aerial maps for the last eight years, you can find them online, there's a historic drainage path that, that flowed through the Redtail property and into the, the swale that, that's in discussion today. So, we can't stop that water from draining through the site, but we can reduce the rates such that they are slower than they were historically. And that's what the ponds have been designed to do and approved to do. Just to give you some perspective on the, the drainage basin, there's actually 80 acres that drains to this, the ditches that are receiving some kind of issues, maintenance issues or erosion issues. So, 80 acres, 50 of those acres comes from the actual developed North Lake subdivision. So, if you were to look at a map... So, um, if you were to look at a map, there's, uh, plenty of houses and streets that already drained to this. Um, it is true that Redtail, um, Redtail Acres has, has developed now, but Redtail Acres is only six acres. So, I mean, you kind of get a perspective on what exactly has changed. Just keep in mind that in the, in the scheme of things, this is like an 8% change, and again, we have ponds that have mitigated that change. There's also 30 acres of water that drains from, um, the other side of Highway Q. Again, that's historically always drained through this site. Um, we, we can't stop that water from draining through our site, nor can Northlake, um, I believe drain, uh, stop that water from draining through their site. Um, so we did conduct a site visit, and I've observed, um, the, the repair areas. If you, if you visit the site, you'll see that it's like a V ditch, and it's a narrow configuration with trees on both sides. Um, I wasn't there when somebody's mowing it, but, um, what I'm visualizing is that somebody has taken their mower and they're driving up the ditch one way and putting their tire in the bottom of the ditch, and then they're driving the other way and putting their tire in the ditch. If that was to happen, the grass would be compacted, um, especially in wet conditions. Um, and I, I think that maybe is part of the cause of, of something that's changed. Um, there has been discussions about the-
Ryan, please try to finish in bar feet.
So, there was a, an 11-inch rain event, um, August of last year. Um, if there ever was to be erosion or velocity issues, it would've been caused by that 11-inch rain event. We've had 3-inch rain events, which are much smaller, and so my argument from a professional engineer's standpoint is that the velocity would've happened last year, and the groundwater table is high now, and that might be also, um, causing some of these issues. And there's also, um, some pump drainage that maybe hasn't historically happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So, the next one is Anna Biermeyer.
I was registering in order to add.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. So, the next one is Stephanie. She also doesn't want to speak, but wants to support the, uh, development. And then there's a Bob Feller. Bob Feller.
Good evening. My name is Bob Feller. I'm the architect for the project, representing, um, Anthony, and I'm with Iconica. We're the designers and builders for the project. Since previous middles, the project has evolved with input from neighbors, staff, planning members, and council members. Originally taller and larger, the footprint has been reduced, realigned, and the height has been reduced. Uh, we feel that the concerns of shading to the neighbors of the north has been addressed, and we feel that the, the new footprint and layout of the building, um, blocks views of parking from University Avenue while still presenting a, a clean, contemporary look. We do feel that this is a much-needed housing type for the City of Middleton, and, um, I guess to keep it short and sweet, I'm here to answer your questions as necessary, and I'll go into as much detail as you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. So, the next one is Eric Upchurch.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Appreciate you for having me. Uh, I'll try to be brief. Um, my name is Eric Stephen Upchurch. I am the Chief Visionary for Opportunity Inc., one of the lead organizers for the Young Gifted and Black Coalition, the founder of the Madison Alliance for Black Economic Empowerment, Council of Communities, and the Economic Empowerment Collaboration. The reason I say that is because so much of our work is centered around supporting collaborative relationships in order to create opportunities for those in our network, and specifically folks who typically are underserved and underrepresented in various markers of livelihood and well-being. Um, some of those collaborative relationships include the Madison Black Chamber of Commerce, who you've heard from, and also the Latino Chamber of Commerce, um, and Jessica Cavasso, President and CEO, um, is there in the back, um, also in support of the Addy for its economic impacts. Um, so much of those who we serve suffer from the pervasive effects of lack of affordable housing, and when we are talking about agency and the need, the, the ability for people to provide for themselves, housing, uh, it's no secret that housing is an integral part of that. Um, we do want the folks who work at Willie Street West to be able to live and work in the same place, but also the Addy is addressing more than just that. The Addy is also the, uh, creating an opportunity to provide an economic engine that will support the agency of folks of color, um, in our communities. And historically, real estate and housing has been used as a tool to create racial disparities, and too often, we see the, um, how do I put this? We see the hands get tied when it comes to opportunities for us to do something for ourselves, to create opportunities for ourselves. So I think we have a historical obligation to do what we can to make the Addy a reality, and I think that the impacts will be felt not just for people who are looking for housing, but also for those who are looking for a, a mechanism that will be able to help us create and sustain wealth in our communities that will eventually impact all communities. So, I'm speaking in support of the Addy, if you haven't guessed that already, and, um, I hope you do, too. Take care.
Thank you so much. Now, there's a Justin from Weir Baker. He's also available to answer questions, but if you want to say anything, you're welcome.
No, just available for your question.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to speak at this time? Is there anyone else who might want to speak? Okay. So, we are going to go to the public hearing, which was supposed to be at 7:32. We are a little bit late. So, this is, uh, Eco-Agrile Industries LLC doing business as hammer and stain medicine, is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage and a Class B intoxicating liquor license. They allocated a 1918 Part Parliamentate State. Anybody who wants to speak, either in favor or against. Anybody who wants to speak. Okay, there are no speakers. I'm gonna close that part of the hearing, and we're gonna go to the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in approval of the consent agenda say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Well, it's a great day in Middleton. Our Middleton High School is phenomenal academically, and they are phenomenal in sports as well. So, could I ask, uh, the school board president and others to come forward, or maybe raise your hands, or, yeah, why not, and all the coaches, why don't you come forward, please? So, and there's Athletic Director Bob Joyce.
Understood.
And Dana Monogue, and all other people here. Wonderful. Awesome. And remember from Physics Day, so. Okay, so I'm gonna read the proclamation. Honoring Middleton High School's accomplished athletes for winning the Wisconsin Sports Network Cup for 2018-19. This was breaking the monopoly of Arrowhead after a long time. So this is phenomenal. So even before we start, let's go with a big hand. This is, this is particularly awesome. Yeah, I had watched a long time ago, one of the football games, which Milton High School played Arrowhead and that football team, and I know how they are, so. Anyway, whereas a changing of the guard highlighted the winners of the 2018 Wisconsin Sports Network Cup awards this past year. Arrowhead's dominance of the large schools division came to an end, as Milton surged ahead early in the year and held on to the take home its first trophy ever. And whereas the Wisconsin Sports Network Cup is the, is in its 12th year, recognizing schools that provide and achieve success in many of the WIAA-sponsored sports. The award totals points earned in both boys' and girls' sports, and whereas all current WIAA-sponsored sports are included as part of the scoring for the award. And whereas, it was all about consistency for the Cardinals, who scored at least 200 points in fall, winter, and spring. Milton led from the beginning of the year with a huge fall season that included a state title in girls' swimming and diving, to go with runner-up finishes in girls' golf and boys' cross country. The girls' basketball team and boys' swimming and diving also posted runner-ups, runner-up finishes during the winter, while boys' golf also finished as runner-up in the spring. And whereas, the Cardinals of Middleton narrowly held off the Cardinals of Bay Gate rival Sun Prairie, who scored 748 points as the large school runner-up. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim the Milton High School Athletic Program for its outstanding success and positive representation of the Milton Cross Plain areas in athletics, academics, and sportsmanship. This proclamation was adopted at regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on 15th day of October 2019. Need a motion to prove?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Amazing. So I'm just gonna go ahead and certify this too.
Well, we're taking pictures.
Come on up today, Bob.
I will, but first, we have all of our athletes back on the field, supporting the pool training for this year's award and stuff coming in. So I brought these finally two athletes right here. These are coaches, board members, board presidents, superintendents, coaches, administration, teachers, people who work in the building, and our booster club was also here, some alumni. In fact, we can't do it without them. I mean, it truly is a whole community working together, as well as the police department, and we have a great relationship with the city. So, it's, it's everybody. You should be really proud of them. And today, about two hours ago, we won the girls' state title in girls' golf.
Wow.
So these guys are amazing. Let's get another thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ben.
Oh, you're back.
My pleasure, always.
Well, we are going to go to the most popular item on the agenda here. This is the-
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just make a recommendation that we go to, um, Planning and Zoning 1 and, and dispense with that quickly?
That's exactly where I was going.
Thank you. I thought you were talking about the Acres program.
No.
They're both very popular.
Okay, Planning and Zoning, item number one. Specific implementation plan, the Addy Project formerly known as the Addison 6814 University Avenue. Need a motion to prove?
Move approval.
Need a second?
And that's continued upon approval of engineering's comments?
Yes.
Okay, any question or comments? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Go ahead and celebrate and start your vote. And thank you to everyone who came and spoke in favor, and, uh, you know, I think this is going to be a great project, and, uh, after a long work, we have come up with an excellent compromise. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You want to say anything?
Just thank you to the mayor and the council for your support. We look forward to becoming good neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please. Um, uh, looking at the old business, there are three items. Um, while I don't have an issue with the first item, I do have issues with the second and third. Uh, my understanding that item two is tabled, and, um, my understanding of Robert's rules means that it requires a council member to request that it be brought back. Uh, so I'll ask the council members here, was there any council member that requested that this item be put on the agenda? So, here, I don't see any.
Not me.
Given that, I would make a motion that we strike numbers two and number three from the agenda. They are not appropriate. They haven't been, uh, vetted by council. They should not be here. We should not be taking them up. Is there a second?
Well, let me ask Larry, what's, uh, one of the motions in order?
Yeah.
Also, the motion is in order.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
We need Larry's report.
Pardon me?
We need Larry's report.
So Larry, you want to-
I'm not suggesting that we, I'm just, item two and three.
Just two and three, right.
Okay. So, um, so I just, uh, take the vote, right?
Yep.
So if there are no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Wait, which?
Two and three.
Yes, aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, now we are on to item number one.
Okay, um, I guess I've been designated to be the report giver here, although most of this concerns, uh, stormwater management. I hope everyone has had a chance to read Gary Huth's extensive memorandum on the status of this project. Um, I'm not going to repeat it. Um, and everyone in the council has heard, um, the conclusions that, um, have been presented. Um, the, um, the Water Resources Management Commission did recently review this project again and approved it again. Um, so we have a situation where, uh, as has been presented during the, the comment period, um, water is flowing from east of Highway Q, under, under the highway in a culvert, um, through the Redtail Acres property and then on to, um, the Northlake property. Um, the, one of the issues that has been alluded to, but I thought I would be more specific about it, is as of April 5, 2018, the legislature adopted a new statute, section 281.33, dealing with erosion control and stormwater management. The most critical one, uh, for, for our purposes is that, um, where, that the Department of Natural Resources is supposed to adopt, um, model ordinances as they have done in the past, presumably will do again, but cities, towns, villages, and counties may enact provisions of an ordinance that are stricter than the uniform standards, um, under some specific circumstances. And the one that is most important here is section 281.33 subsection 6A1, which says that, um, a local ordinance can control stormwater quantity or peak flow to address existing flooding problems or prevent future flooding problems, except that an ordinance under this law may not require more than 90% of the difference between the pre-development annual runoff volume at a site and the post-development annual runoff volume at the site to be retained on the site. So we have a state law that bars completely retaining all stormwater on, on-site. I, I think it is very important, and, and although I have nothing technical to add to Gary's report, uh, which, of course, you've heard that the developer is willing to comply with the provisions that are there, but to talk about the purpose of the stormwater covenant. the provisions that are there, but to talk about the purpose of the stormwater covenant. The city started requiring stormwater covenants at the time of that the county increased their stormwater management standards. And this covenant provides a permanent means to require that each neighborhood not only comply with their stormwater management plan today, but also to comply with it in the future. So in, in the most typical case, um, once a developer has built a subdivision, put in stormwater management facilities, sells the lots, and then is no longer on the scene, our, our covenant, which is enforceable on all the lots in the subdivision, are bound to continue to provide the ability to enforce the plan into the future. Our covenant specifies that if there are problems in the, um, in, in the stormwater management, we give notice to the neighborhood to enforce its plan, to remediate things that need to be remediated, but also provide that if the neighborhood won't do it, the city will do it for them, and the neighborhood will be charged the cost of providing the remediation. So the, the purpose of this covenant is to provide a permanent way to provide stormwater management, neighborhood by neighborhood, into the future. Now, Northlake was approved long before this requirement existed, so we're not being critical about it, it's just that that was not the state of the art at the time it was approved. But that, essentially what we have here in, in Gary's report, is that Redtail Acres has provided all of the stormwater management, that its plan, approved by Water Resources Management Commission, and then subsequently approved a second time by Water Resources, our stormwater experts. The fact that there is, is water leaving Redtail Acres, obviously, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not going to, I don't play one on TV either, but that because the water is not entirely originating in Redtail Acres, no stormwater management plan, as I understand it, requires that, that the stormwater originating from upstream in the, in the drainage basin also be managed as it flows through the property. And so, that's my report for now, so everybody understands that, as Gary has summarized, city staff has not been able to identify any justification for withholding approval of the stormwater management covenant that, that we require. And I agree with that conclusion. That's all I have.
Mike, is there any other city staff who want to say anything more, or that's it?
No, I, I think Larry spoke for...
Larry spoke for the, the staff on that matter, and you have Gary's memo, unless Sean wanted to add anything?
Sean?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay.
I'll try to answer questions if they're on.
Are there any questions for Larry?
Yes, I have some comments. First of all, the stormwater, I'm sorry, the Erosion Control and Stormwater Management Report, which I believe is the basis for the stormwater management plan, on page, it looks like page three, under the heading of outlets, and this is, I am quoting from the developer's plan, "Discharges from the develop, development must have a stable outlet capable of carrying design flow at a non-erosive velocity." Phil, can you bring up the document I sent you? And I want you to see if you can get to the attachment, and I'm looking for exhibit So this is a picture of the outfall from the developer's property, moving, I guess it's south, towards the Northlake neighborhood. You can see that this is, this was taken on 9/29. On the right side of the silt fence is, there are signs of erosion from the stormwater that has come through this property. The outfall basin is, is completely flooded. I think this is showing objective evidence that whatever the modeling suggested, in practical purposes, it does not work. If you can go to exhibit O, this was taken on 10-1, if you can scroll up a little bit, you can see that the water is pooling behind the hay bales, right? Hay bale is probably what, two to three feet tall? You've got almost a foot of water on the acre side of the property, it is starting to infiltrate onto the Northlake side, right? And clearly, whatever practices are, have been put into place are not working there. Some of the other pictures which you're going to see, it doesn't, you can just scroll through those, I will report that having been a resident of Northlake for the last 15, 14 years, and being a board president, I'm sorry, board treasurer of Northlake for two years, three years, that we have never exhibited erosion in this area of the development. It hasn't been until the streets were paved that this issue started. You can see that there are many areas of scouring, which were not there even through the big storm of last year. To me, that is ample evidence that whatever provisions the stormwater maintenance plan has are not sufficient for what this development is bringing. There's anecdotal evidence, I, I've been told that there are at least ever, well, I've been told that residents on either side of that well will readily testify that they did not see evidence of that erosion and scouring in years prior to this development as well. So to me, there are huge problems with the stormwater plan, I believe it's insufficient, and that's, that's really what we're talking about here, is we're, the, the, the Northlake neighborhood is asking the city to fulfill one of its primary obligations, is to protect the property of the citizens of Middleton. I, I can answer more, I, you know, I, it's just, we've not experienced, the, the neighborhood has not experienced this level of high-velocity water, of erosion and scouring on the, the areas in Northlake since I've been there. And I think you can ask some of the residents that hasn't, has never been there into this area, right? In effect, the developer has modified the land to concentrate the outflows onto a single point, which empties right onto Northlake property. There is no stormwater easement through this area, this is private property. So let that sink in, it is private property, right? There is no right anywhere for any developer to concentrate the flows onto a single point on private property. This would be akin to having your neighbor adjust all of his downspouts and point them at your house. That's what's going on here. So...
I, I'm not here to defend anything or the facts, but Gary tells me that if the issue is that upstream property owners are required to get easements from downstream property owners, then every single stormwater management agreement for the last 25 years is deficient because none of them have easements from the downstream property owners, not a single one. I'm just reporting what Gary tells me, I don't know that for a fact. I, I just want to be clear that, that that is the situation. And, and it, and Gary's report also lists a number of recommendations which would require the developer to repair and maintain the recently eroded areas, and these are all on page two of Gary's report. There's no denial that there's been problems that have taken place, but, but, and you've heard from the developer who has said these are reasonable, and, and he supports, the developer is willing to agree to all of Gary's recommendations.
But does that sound reasonable to you, Mike?
Well, so, they are reasonable, okay? It's a question of when that happens. I don't see any rush in, in signing this agreement until the neighborhood and the developer can come to some agreement that they can, evidence in writing, and they, they can report back to us. So that's, I think that's a reasonable position on this. I support that there, there's accommodations, I support that they can get this thing worked out. I don't see the rush for the city to do anything until they can, both parties can report back to the council that they've reached an accommodation or some type of agreement.
Can I ask if that would take a couple of weeks, or because snow is coming?
My understanding is that, that...
Or spring?
What's reasonable is sometime next week.
Oh, that's reasonable.
So...
Can you clarify that? I think you mean the agreement.
The agreement.
Yes.
I think she was talking about...
Agreement and then timetable, because as a developer, we want you to be, you know, moving forward, but we also want the community to not be impacted as ice starts barreling. And, and the reason I'm invested is because we have a lot of developments in my district that are the downhill portion, so I want your folks to be happy.
I think it's...
I, I say that because we have a lot of water coming towards us, we're in the Lakeview part, so like, the park is full of water, so you know, don't want to go outside of things, but also want to make sure that the Northlake are moving forward.
Yeah, even the stricker pond and Tinmont Pond water goes to you.
Right, right. Case y'all, want to come visit, we got lots of water, it's fun.
So...
Yours is not fun, I apologize, yeah.
No, I, it's, it's going to be a predicament for most infill development within the city.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, you know, from my position, I don't see the harm in waiting, I have no problem, what, once the, the parties reach an agreement, that we can proceed with this, but until such time as that they do, I think we should hold pat and just not, not consider this any longer.
Luke, you have a...
Well, I was just going to say, given our, just recent action to remove two and three from the, we couldn't even vote on it if we wanted to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so might as well, yep, it sounds...
Any other questions or comments either to Larry or anyone else? Yes, Robert?
Actually, this is a question for Ryan Quam, I believe, can I ask you to, and can we put up that picture again? I just, I'm curious, the, the one picture that shows the, I guess, call it the outflow?
The outfall.
Outfall, thank you.
It's exhibit O, I'm, I'm sorry. No, it's exhibit N, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just, can you help, I, I'm an engineer, but I'm not the right kind of engineer for this. So I, I think what I see in the distance is actually the, what I'll call the retention pond, I don't know if that's the right term, and then this is, when it gets to a certain level, the water comes out through this grating, and it looks like the water's just pooling there, and it, what's the intent for, where is that water supposed to go? Is that supposed to be a dry basin where it does just sit there? How, is it supposed to travel someplace? Because it does look like it's just turning into another pond there, and help me understand what the intent was.
Sure, um, so I think this picture was probably taken like right after rain stopped, and we went out there and it was dry when we made the site visit, but, but yeah, there's positive drainage from the property line and traveling down through Northlake ditch, there's like a, anywhere from a 1% to a 2% slope, so, but the detention pond, you know, it fills with water, let's just say it fills like two feet full of water, and then after a rain event, it'll continue to release water over a period of like 24 hours, so even though you don't see rain falling from the sky, there's still water trickling out of that, 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 that end section. Underneath that water, there is riprap, and that's, those are like six-inch to nine-inch pieces of rock that take the energy out of the water. So when the water, you know, the larger rain events, it'll come faster and faster out of that, that end section. We designed it, and it was approved to be non-erosive velocity, so, so it's at less than three feet per second. That's different than erosion. Sorry, Mark, Mark was kind of getting two phrases mixed up. Non-erosive velocity is a velocity that doesn't scour the grass, so we have designed it so it doesn't scour the dirt grass. Versus erosion, I mean, you can see the water is dirty, there is going to be some amount of erosion coming from a construction site, that's, there's just no way around that. The pond itself acts as the biggest sediment control device, so there's a lot more dirt in that pond, but some of the milky dirt's coming out. There also is a silt fence, and we're, we're, that, that's also causing some of that water to back up, because another item Mark brought up is, you know, the water sitting beyond the hay bales. That's, that's insane, that's like, obviously a conclusion that it's, it's a bad design, that's actually what it's supposed to do. I mean, it's supposed to hold the water back so that it doesn't, so the water, the sediment has a chance to, to settle out of the water because it's being held back. So we're, we're just about to the point where we would like to remove the silt fence and the hay bales. I don't know how it would be perceived from the neighborhood, but they have kind of served their purpose because grass is established upstream. We don't have any erosion on our ditches, for instance, there's, there's stable grass, the velocities are, as approved, you know, non-erosive unless they're three feet per second, so, um, once we remove that silt fence, you won't see as much of that water backing up, and again, I don't know how it would be perceived, but we're kind of at that point.
Any other question for Ryan Wiley there?
I'll, I'll just make the, the comment that, on, on the right side of that photograph, what you're, what is, is covered with water that's three to four inches deep are furrows that were caused by water overtopping the silt fence and eroding Northlake property, right? Whether it's an erosive force or it eroded the property, I think that it's a matter of semantics, the, the effect is, is that Northlake has suffered property damage because of the way things are, are constructed here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments to anyone? Okay, so this is, they say, no, Larry, you have anything more to say?
No.
Okay, so move, move on to the agreements, this is the item number one, selection of the firm to serve as a construction manager for Lakeview Shelter Project.
Move approval is recommended by Finance and PRFC. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say...
I'm very excited for this, that's my comment. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Let me go, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, Property Maintenance Services Agreement. And this is...
Bless you.
Thank you.
Public Works Committee, Finance.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Recommendations and Proposals. Item number one, Proposal of Engineering Consulting Services from Cardinal for Fazan Branch Repairs North of Century Avenue.
Move approval is recommended by Stormwater Utility and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number two, Proposal from MSA Related to ADA Design Work for Firefighters' Memorial Park.
Move approval is recommended by PRFC and Finance. Move approval is recommended by PRFC and Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number three, concept review for tax incremental financing, number thirty incentive, Town Place Suites and Hotel 3055 Deming Bay.
Move approval is recommended by Finance from the amount of $1,002,7541. Second.
All those, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. On to budget, authorization for the use of 2019 general contingency funds to purchase electronic poll box.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Let's make Lori happy, so...
Just say, I'm excited. I love tech.
All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, direction regarding publishing the notice for the budget public hearing.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Howard?
One. On page 207 of our packet, which is really the page two of three of the, really it's the first page, I guess, of the 2020 general fund proposed budget. Notice there's a star next to local property taxes and there's no legend telling me or the public what that star, asterisk, I suppose would be a better term, what that might mean. And I'm wondering if somebody can just explain that and do we need a legend on here or footnote?
Yep.
It's near the bottom of the page. And maybe I just missed it, but right there.
Yeah.
It says, "Local property taxes asterisk", and then 12 million something. Do you see it?
I don't see it.
Okay.
Yes, I do see that. And I believe the intent of the asterisk was to indicate that that's just the general fund portion and that the debt service portion of the levy is done separately. That goes back to several years ago. The city used to levy for its full amount of taxes in the general fund and then transfer money to the debt service fund. For several years now, we've been levying directly into the debt service fund for debt service and to the general fund just for operating. And I think that notation got left off on here, so we can add that in to the notice for that explanation.
I don't know if it's necessary, I just, I wasn't sure what it meant.
It should be included.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question, Robert, yes.
So, Robert, I'm amazed that it took you to page 207 to find the first typo.
I'm in love, too.
I'm amazed, I'm amazed that I caught it and that I didn't stop reading after page 200, honestly, but thank you.
Good job. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to give the direction for publishing the notice for the budget public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Report from C.C. Raffrell's 10-119 concerning addressing problems on Allenwood Avenue.
I would move that we refer this issue to the Police Commission, EMS Commission, and Fire Commission to get their feedback.
I would second that.
Could I ask a clarification, Susan? Do you mean the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, Public Safety, yes.
Thank you.
Public Safety, EMS, and Fire.
Public Safety Committee, EMS Commission, and Fire Commission. Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause? So the motion passes unanimously. I know you guys are waiting for the answers, but we do want to help you, so... Okay, so we are on to the next item, which is item number two, recommendation from Downtown Plaza Advisory Committee for naming of the plaza.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? It's going to be a Stone Horse Green. Are you all excited about it?
Sounds great. I can't wait. I'll take the kids.
There was a lot of discussion about it. Back in March, they, we'd come up with that was a name that they liked and met again just last week and they liked it again. It wasn't unanimous, but it was what was... And it has to do with the art sculptures that are going to be in the plaza, or the green. And that we feel like there's parks that people go to and they kind of call it after a feature in the park. So...
Any other questions or comments or anybody else want to say more? Mike or anyone? Oh, yes, Robert?
This is actually just in the notes and there's two different notes, so I want to double check which one is right. In the notes in my agenda, it says, the very last line is, "The council has directed a need for $1 million in fundraising." I think, at least in my printed out packet, it says, "The council has directed a need for $500,000 in fundraising." And I just want to, which one is the correct one now?
I think it's a million to raise.
It is correct, it's a million. And I changed that on the council version, but I think Lori already had compiled my earlier mistake where I put $500,000.
No, no apologies necessary, I just wanted confirmation.
A million is the correct amount, that's what the council set as the fundraising goal.
Thank you, that's what I thought I remembered, so I appreciate that confirmation.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, it's Stone Horse Green and the tagline is "Where Good Neighbors Gather" instead of "Meet Where Good Neighbors Gather."
I think the tagline is really good.
I like it.
I do.
Yes.
The tagline is great.
Yes, "Where the Good Neighbors Gather."
Yes.
That's a big other name.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of the motion for the recommendation from Downtown Plaza Advisory Committee for the naming of the plaza to Stone Horse Green, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion...
Aye.
Oh, there are, how many? Okay, so it's six, two.
Primugents.
Not unanimous.
Something other than Stone Horse, but that's okay.
Den Marks Park.
So the next one is the update on sire on base enhancements for paperless agenda package. Bill or anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since we're going to be using the iPads, I was glad to see we can take them home with us. If we take them home, are we going to be able to log in and get the agendas? Or do we have to be in this building?
You don't need to be in this building to download the packet. IT did confirm that with the vendor. You would just need any internet connection. You would log into the site through the app and can download it. And then once it's downloaded, you can work with it wherever.
That's fine.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Emily?
I just want to say thank you to everyone for your consideration of being paperless. As we talk about being a sustainable community and going green, especially as we're barreling towards the 2020s, what an exciting time. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, well, I think this was, do we need a motion to approve? Okay, need a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
It's just an update, isn't it?
Well, we, the last time we said that, bring that information and you can't really act on it until the city council was satisfied with it.
It's on the agenda as an update.
Well, my recollection is that all we're doing is asking for confirmation that it would work as explained.
Because we already...
Okay, so are you happy with this then, what they have done?
Yes.
Thank you, Emily. We are on to ordinances. The first reading, final action may be taken upon approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 Milton General ordinances. Item number one, an ordinance to create a workforce housing committee in the city of Milton. And...
Move approval.
I'll second it.
So I have a, which is the version now? The one which I have here is...
This is the old version.
Okay, so which one are we approving?
Well, the... The, I can tell you what the changes are. I'm sorry, this wasn't completed in time. In the first line, where it says the workforce housing committee shall consist of, it's going to be seven voting and one non-voting member. Then in subsection B, there will be five citizen members. And then in C, we're going to strike the non-voting for the plan commission member. And there's a period at the end, and those are the changes.
Okay, so what happens to the people who are already members now, who are serving?
Well, once this ordinance is adopted, the ad hoc committee will cease to exist. And I think it will be up to the mayor with the consent of the of the common council to decide who gets to be on the committee.
But they're already...
Right, but it's an ad hoc committee.
It's just dissolving one committee and starting another.
That's right.
Reappoint the same people.
It could be the same people, it might be different people. That's, that will be a decision to make at that time.
So could it be implemented next April?
If that's what you decided to do, sure.
I mean, once you have those people, I don't know if you want to...
You could, you could, you could put an effective date of May 1, 2021, 2020, if you wanted to do that.
What about simply reappointing the people that are currently on workforce housing with their terms staggered as they are now?
No, we have more members than you are putting there.
Okay, we're taking members off.
Yeah. You have seven citizen members there now. So, so I, so was there any reason? I don't know to reduce this number. There was one non-voting and the plan commission person and...
I think it was, Mark, didn't you say you wanted it all commissions to have seven members, voting members? Wasn't that kind of to streamline that?
That was part of it. That was, I mean, that would just make things easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's a, you know, ladies with, I mean, this is the, we have an issue with workforce housing is a problem. Having more people really, doesn't really hurt anyone. And we have really great experts.
It detracts from the efficiency of the committee, right? What you're saying is that you can't find seven people, the best seven people to put on this committee?
No, we have great people out there and I don't really...
Then pick the best seven and move forward.
Okay, so this is the first reading, we will work on it. So all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes.
Is the effective date of the motion or not?
No.
So then Larry's advice stands, the committee would be dissolved and...
Well, we still have a second reading.
We've got to do a second reading.
Oh, it's not first reading?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's not approved tonight?
We could still, you know, we could still change it, I'm going to look into it, so... The ordinance to create regulations for Downtown Plaza.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm having trouble, is there an actual gas fireplace that citizens will be using? It's in the design on the stage where it'd be like a push button if they wanted to use it. With a timer. And anyone could just walk up there and use it? Glass front, yeah.
So it's not open?
Okay, so, until somebody breaks the glass front. Why? Hopefully not. I'm just thinking in terms of safety issues. Yeah, well, maybe, I don't think they'll work if there's, it's broken, isn't there? I don't know.
I assume that it's going to be basically a gas fireplace, so if the glass is broken, it will still work.
But, what, was that too much?
So even if it's, yeah, well, I agree with Dan, so if it's broken, so what, somebody will...
The presence of a gas fireplace there. I don't think so.
So should there be a mechanism that it will shut off if it's broken?
I don't know how, and then here, it'd be pretty tricky to figure out when, you know, when the glass was broken for a mechanism to have a, some type of a shut-off valve.
Could we get the fire department's opinion of this being in the plaza? Okay. I'll second that. Okay.
So you, are we still doing a first reading?
I'm pretty sure that Abby already ran this by the fire department.
Did they, the gas fireplace too?
I'm pretty sure she did.
Okay. Could you bring us that information for the second reading?
Sure.
I know they did with the...
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye? Yes, Mike, you have something to add?
Yeah, in the staff comments, there were several things that Abby had brought up. And since this is only at first reading tonight, I would encourage you to consider those items.
I would also make a motion to refer to PRFC because they're controlling it.
No, they don't want to get involved with this.
The point, the point I was about ready to make is that PRFC is not planning to manage this facility. However, the ordinance is in the section, it's modified under this, Parks and Public Lands. So that, it's just a question of whether or not you're asking PRFC to review this or not. But my understanding all along has been that this would not be a park. This is going to be Stone Horse Green, which is not a park.
Then why do we even have that comment, which implies it should go to the...
Yes, Robert.
Just to make sure that we answer these questions before we get too far along.
I, yeah, exactly. So the question I have, and, you know, I think there is a little confusion here, is I do remember hearing that Parks and Rec doesn't want to, Parks and Public Lands doesn't want to take an ownership of this. Who...
Who's going to...
Who does have an ownership of this?
Well, we're planning, and the CDA budget that you are authorizing publication for has additional funds for maintenance of this facility. So the CDA is the entity that would be managing and maintaining.
It would be actually, they would be funding it, but are they actually going to do the work from maintaining it and hire the contractors?
Yes, there's an additional $5,000. We anticipated that if the plaza was completed next year, it would be available during the fall. And in a subsequent year, that there could be an additional allocation from the CDA that would be an increase for maintenance depending upon...
So Matt's not going to have to do anything with maintaining this? Also, there's, they want to make up Friends of the Downtown Green Group.
Stone Horse Green.
The Stone Horse Green, the Green Group, so it'd be like the emergency group. They'd kind of receive...
Yes, Robert.
I would, I would ask if Matt has anything that he'd like to contribute to this conversation?
Matt is, well, congratulations, Matt, for your award. And you guys heard that, you know...
Yes.
Okay, let's hear from you.
Just to clarify a couple of things. From a staff perspective, we, I personally think the plaza is a great thing. I think it's a great addition to downtown, wonderful amenity to the community. We are not opposed to it, we're not even opposed to taking care of it. We're opposed to taking care of it with our current funding source. And I know that PRFC has had some discussion in the past around the time I think I was coming into my position about that concern. So I think if funding is in place from an outside source, whether it's something that we add on to LTE staff responsibilities because we've got additional dollars or there's opportunities there, I think that's, the concern is that we can't take on more with our current resources available to us. So, just to clarify.
Yeah, so Matt, would PRC then be making the decisions about how it's maintained if they're provided the funding?
I, I'll defer that decision to this body in terms of who's responsible for it, if, if the funding's there and it's something charged to us, we'll gladly be involved in that decision process. The one thing that I would comment, I was recently at a national conference, and they're telling us, design everything with dogs in mind, because whether people want dogs there or not, they're going to be there, and if we don't allow them there, the horde's going to come out wanting their dogs there, so I think that's something that somebody's got to talk about a lot further in the, in the design.
Yeah, I guess I see PRFC making these decisions if we can provide the funding. I don't know that much about the CDA in terms of, have they ever managed parks?
So Larry, if it's a park, you can't use that money, or you could?
It's an operational cost.
It's operational cost.
Well, we're not calling this a park, in fact, the ordinance says parks in public lands, so it is clearly a public land.
Right.
So it's covered by that.
So I think you have...
We're just raising this for this discussion, so that we're talking about it now rather than later. And the issue that Matt brought up about pets, I couldn't agree more, as a downtown walker on a regular basis, I see numerous dogs out in the morning, so if you say no pets, it ain't going to happen that way. There will be pets.
Yeah, uh, yeah, in terms of pets, I see them in stores all the time where they probably even shouldn't be, but people bring their dogs, put them in the shopping carts and go through. But I'm more concerned about if this is under the control of the CDA, do they even bring...
Right, so this is the thought, be, this is what I was trying to explain before when you cut me off. The CDA has funded, has increased funds.
Yeah.
The CDA will work with parks and probably use the same vendor that they have for the park shelters to maintain the grounds, or at least maintain the restrooms. We also have this summer, can I just finish?
Yeah, but I...
Yeah, please let Mike finish now, so at least one of you finished.
This summer, we collaborated with the library and tourism to cobble funds together that has been used separately in the past to fund a halftime position, you might have seen her around, to do the landscaping and maintenance in the downtown area. That worked pretty well, that was a collaborative effort, it wasn't parks, but parks supervise the employee.
Okay, now can I ask my question?
Absolutely.
The CDA has control of this, will council have a say over what gets done?
Yeah, doesn't, CDA funds projects, they don't really control anything, so...
Well, that's what my concern is.
Yeah, so, so it will be, again, as, you know, it's, it's really controlled by PRFC, so essentially, I mean, it's, that one half position which was funded is again, you know, supervised by Matt's department, so it will be something similar, so...
Susan's is a good question, though, because CDA has a separate jurisdiction under state law. However, what I'm trying to tell you is that we're collaborating now, and we intend to collaborate as we go forward. The, the CDA authority is primarily financial, not exercising control over public lands.
That's why I have concerns, so I would feel better if there was some sort of agreement with the CDA as to what's going to be provided, what they will control, or if we want to modify the park, do they get to do it, or does council have a say in it?
I think those details are which we will work out, you're just starting here from, you know, I guess, this is to create the regulation, so...
This is the ordinance for the regulation.
By putting it into ordinance, the council does have final say. Correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but that's your authority, is you put this ordinance in place, then you have final authority, and I administer on your behalf.
This is an ordinance on use, I'm talking about also, this is a little bit different, my questions, if they wanted to structurally change something in the plaza, if it's under CDA control and not public land, do they have to get our permission? So if they wanted to remove the horse...
They wanted to change the name.
Or change the name.
That was an advisory committee, that wasn't the CDA.
Yeah.
So the, that's a good question, too. The council finally approves the TIF. In the budget, you have five, 500,000 from TIF and a million from fundraising, so the council has the final call on that as well.
Yes, but 10 years from now, and they want to take something out.
Well, don't even go that far, right? We just completed the budget process, and we had a large, a long discussion about the continued viability of the CDA. I'd be concerned about having a secure funding source for this, from CDA, right? Because the reality is, is that the general fund or, or TIF is going to end up paying for this, not CDA.
Well, CDA, I mean, the money has to come from somewhere, there's only, it's a...
No, what I'm trying to tell you is that it's going to be a buy, it's going to be a pass-through, right?
Yes, yes.
So, everything else being equal, the CDA's not going to have funds to maintain this property.
And I agree with you, this is, once we have this plaza, it's going to cost quite a bit of money to run it, so, so I don't think that all those details would have to be worked out, and I don't know whether we are or not, so, so, but I think, you know, having all those programming details, and it's not just cleaning, so somebody would have to be programming it, so otherwise, it won't be what we would want it to be, so all of those things would have to be, or they are working out, I don't know. Is any of that happening, Matt, or Mike, or anyone else?
The programming?
Yeah, who's going to...
On the programming, that's kind of a, up in the air right now, but we anticipate, not only would the downtown businesses like to have programs there, but so would Parks and Recreation like to sponsor programs there, correct me if I'm wrong, and there could be other entities as well, the senior center, the library, it could be, it's going to be for the whole community, so Northlake Neighborhood Association might want to sponsor a party there, who knows?
Have a symposium on stormwater.
I'll go, red tail, it'll be fabulous.
I think the way I see is, let's hope we can, yes, Susan, so, let's see if we can raise a million dollar to begin with, and then we, I guess the TIF does have 500,000 to allocate here, so...
In terms of, in terms of the maintenance, though, Mark raises a good question, because CDA does not have a long-term revenue source. One of the concepts that we have floated in, I think, different committees, at least in staff meetings, is that at the end of this TID, the expenditure period, that we set aside an allocation for longer-term maintenance of the plaza.
Yes, Susan.
Yeah, what I'm trying to say, I'm not concerned, I understand PRFC doesn't want to pay for this, so we've got to come up with a different funding source. I see PRFC as being a very good body to make decisions about how it's maintained and regulated.
Just like the Friends of the Library, or Friends of the Pheasant Branch, they want to set up a Friends of the Stone Horse Green, and work with that, and make sure they have funds and programming.
Well, but that's not, neither one of those are city, I could see them being advisory to, uh...
Like the fundraising committee, you mean?
Yeah, because Friends of Pheasant Branch advise conservancy lands on things, but they don't make the final decisions.
Okay, so...
Like the library board.
Do you want to, yes, Robert, do you want to refer to PRFC and come up with something?
I would actually like to hear one more time from the director of PR.
Yes.
Yes.
The Parks Professional of the Year.
Yes, I've heard that.
The one other piece that was mentioned in Abby's staff comments revolves around alcohol, and I, I think that is a critical topic to discuss for the plaza, I'm not sure PRFC is the right body for that discussion, and, and that's really for this group to discuss and determine if, if there's another referral to a committee to better discuss that, that issue.
Well, that's actually in the ordinance, though. LNO...
LNO would be the committee.
Did recommend alcohol beverages are permitted, except that the committee may restrict possession and consumption of alcohol beverages, so they, they did cover that.
And no glass.
And the police was consulted.
Yes.
And they say no glass. Yeah.
We also say no glass.
Okay, so it looks like, Mike, how do you want to handle it? It's very complicated, and I think you need some group to sort it out.
We've had the discussion, which is good. I would hope on second reading that you would allow dogs in the, in the, the green, because I think it's going to, as Matt noted, be a, a problem that we can see coming down the road, and that you will be faced with if you try to enforce people having dogs in the, in the facility.
Would that be when there's special events, they could prohibit them, or...
I think that's the better regulation, you know, when you have a large gathering of people, having pets might be more problematic, but that still could be...
Confusing to, you know...
Well, there are a lot of details which we, Emily, go ahead.
I'd like to support having dogs there, because when I lived in a hipster neighborhood in Ohio, I bought my first place, I know, it was so fun, and then after like three months, we got the dog, and we took the dog everywhere, and I can't lie, I wouldn't have been reading regulations, I would have been messing up left and right, so excited about my dog! And then the babies came later, so then I know about ordinances, so please, support hipsters, rather than supporting the drink-ins, you know, have fun, bring your dog.
And I was never a hipster, and I had a dog, so, there you go.
Well, I have a little chihuahua, and I...
You're just so enlightened.
So, Mike, I have a little chihuahua, and I walk her five times a day, and I know what dog is like.
You're definitely not a hipster.
And she's going to do what she wants, so, so I think there are some areas which we have to restrict, and the other areas, you know, is fine, so if people are sitting on some places, I think I would rather, anyway, this is something which we need to, you know, sort it out, so...
Right, we have ordinances to pick up after your dog, so...
Right, that's what we did, so we're responsible.
Well, there's some things that you can pick up, and the others you cannot, so, so you know the difference.
Yeah, Mike, we have an ordinance to pick up after your dog, the problem, and this is, we, I fully support having dogs there, but considering that we have a big apartment building, that I don't know if they allow pets, or specifically dogs.
They do, they have a lot of pets.
And this is going to become the neighborhood dog park.
Okay, something to think about, I...
Steve, I haven't finished.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
And I think we do need to address that issue, because if you don't have people picking up after your dogs, it's not going to be pleasant to walk in there.
The key is the, to follow the existing ordinances, have your dog on leash.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Pick up after your dog.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the dogs are...
Who's going to enforce that? I live in a neighborhood...
Other dog owners are going to enforce it, because once somebody ruins it for everybody, that's awful, and so other dog people do pick up after other dogs.
Not in Middleton Hills.
Well, that's a problem.
That's a different issue, when I was in my hipster area.
You go to Dealey in the Middleton Hills, but...
You need to work on the good neighbor skills.
Yes, yes.
And there's notices that go out about it, but there are some dog owners that will not force it.
Well, we'll have to put stations out, so then we can sell baggies for a fundraiser, put a ranger at the entrance to sell dog licenses.
Wow, great ideas, Dan.
President of the council comes through.
You're on a leash.
No, it's, you know...
We just thought, it's good to get the discussion now.
Yeah, I mean, this is something we do need to have some way of...
Mostly we want Georgia to be able to poke fun at us in this discussion.
Yes.
Well, there's plenty of ammunition.
Yes, I'm a hipster, former hipster.
Yes, Luke.
No, I'm good.
Anyone else?
You go ahead.
I just said, if pets were allowed, that they should be on a leash, for sure.
The dogs have to be on leash in Middleton, so you cannot...
I have seen dogs already, right?
Yeah.
Well, I actually let them know when I meet somebody, but it's very infrequent now, so, yes, Robert?
I, I think I recall hearing that we need to raise a million dollars, how many dog pickup bags can we sell between now and the opening of this park? Because maybe...
How many, it's how many, how much we charge for it.
We are not to great ideas now, so...
Get a picture with your dog standing on the Stone Horse, 50 bucks.
That's what I was going to say, is, is there any sentiment to change the name to Dog and Stone Horse Green?
My dog Matilda would like the park named after her.
Okay, all right, any other relevant discussion, otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or the motion passes, now need a, we are on to the resolution, so this is item number one, and this is Emily's district there, and they want to fix that area, and there are some issues. So this is the resolution number 201939, authorizing removal of obstructions to navigation relating to Baskerville Harbor Bulkhead Repair Project. Emily, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, there's a vote or some other things there which are in the way, and so...
Could we give them a little more than one day's notice?
Yes, that was, I was concerned, that it's only 24-hour notice, so...
Everybody's already been notified.
Sean, so...
Yeah, they, they were notified.
And the city's in negotiation with one property owner.
They, they were notified, and we do need to get the bulkhead in before the ice starts coming, which is why I'm always worried about time.
All right, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, or the motion passes, unanimous, and the motion adjourned.
So move on.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye, so we adjourn, thank you.